We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone will stand. Repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to excuse Bruce today, so I get to be the person who talks. We've added a new part to our agenda, some public comment. This is not part of a public hearing, but just opportunity if someone had something that's not on the agenda that they wanted to address with the planning commission. And do we have anyone here who has something that is not part of the agenda that they would like to comment on? Okay, so we will move on to our first matter of business, which is, is a zone change the Casey duplex? And the landmark zone change, are we going to take care of those separately?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Start with Casey. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the project because I think all of you have been part of previous discussions that we've had where basically the concept was presented that would allow for the construction of a duplex right here. I don't know the history of the property explicitly, but I think I have kind of bought into the idea that, at one point in time at least, it was planned that what exists on this property would match what you have next door with maybe another fourplex being built here. At present, there's a fourplex here. So one of the changes that was made about a year and a half ago with this property in mind was a change to the density that's allowed in the R3 zone to allow for the construction of two more units here, a total of six, on a property of that size. And that change was made by the city council to change the language in Title 15 just simply to allow for a little bit higher density, which has led then to the applicant pursuing this concept by way of submitting a site plan to the city for us to review, and the proposal to change the zoning to R3. Right now, the R1.6 zone does not allow duplexes used to a while back. So for one, in order to construct a duplex, the zoning would have to be changed to R3. Also, to allow for the additional two units and just that density, the zoning needs to be changed to R3. And the mechanism that we have in the city to allow for this type of infill development is our infill overlay. And that allows for, among other things, the approval of a project where it doesn't have the amount of frontage that would be required for a standalone duplex where the units will be back behind, away from the street. But really, this type of a situation, I think, is what we'd envisioned when we created the infill overlay zone here some time ago. And with that, I mentioned a couple of other things. First of all, staff has reviewed this, and we have recommended that it be approved, provided that the applicant meets our construction standards when the development activity occurs and also provided that all of the provisions of the infill overlay are met when the actual construction happens. I believe that the applicant is prepared to do that and plans on doing that. So then, just maybe to recap, the items specifically that are on your agenda tonight are the two different zone changes, one to change the zoning of the property to R3, and then the approval of the infill overlay, which is a zoning mechanism as well in order to approve the specific proposal to have the duplex constructed there on the property.
Does anyone have any questions for Dave before we go to a public hearing? Okay, then we'll need a motion to go to a public hearing.
Make a motion, we go to a public hearing.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. So is anyone here who would like to, if you want to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself with your name and then go ahead and make your comments?
Hi, I'm Shereen Swan. I live right across the street on Fifth North or Sixth North and 500 East. So right across the street. We already have one, one, two, three, four, five, six, I believe there's seven or eight apartment buildings on that block already. We are overflowed with apartments. There is one apartment that sits right on the corner of Sixth North and 50th that has been in disrepair for about 10 to 15 years. There's an old man that goes over and works on it occasionally for an hour or two. There's nothing done with those apartments. They need to be bulldozed down. I'm suggesting, don't put more apartments there, but bulldoze those ones down because they're no good, they're just trash. There's all, he comes over and mows the lawn maybe once a month at 10 o'clock at night. And he's doing that all summer long at 10 o'clock at night. And he's, I don't know who he is, but he's a strange bird. I can say that because I'm a swan. Anyway, I don't want to have any more apartments. We are inundated with apartments. We don't need any more. I'm sorry, but the apartment, have you guys, do you guys live in or around a lot of apartments?
I happen to, yeah.
And the, the, the moving in and moving out constantly? And the police? We have police, we have had police over there as much as once a week. So, like I said, I just, I'm totally against putting in any more apartments in that area. We're full.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Casey. I am the one going for the zone change. Not to add apartments. I do not own the ones that have had the police issues, and yet I'm trying to clean up the neighborhood. There's nothing else that's going to go on this piece of property. As far as the gentleman on the corner, his name's Edison, he's a little crazy. He's not going to do anything. That's up to the city. Their hands are tied also. So instead of having a dirt lot, I propose to put a nice twin home. My personal fourplex that is owned, that is on the southwest corner, I've had renters in there for two years, the same ones. No cops. That's mine, that's why I'm going for it. So however people feel, I take care of my neighborhood, and I'm trying to make it better. That's why I'm going for a zone change, instead of a single-family dwelling home that will never be used. So, that's my point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments about this specific development and zone change? Okay, do we, we make a motion to close?
You can, or you can just say, I closed the public hearing.
Okay.
Tradition, we have a motion, but you're the chairman, so that's your call.
So I'll just go ahead and close the public hearings, since we have multiple public hearings, we'll just speed it up. I'll just close that public hearing.
Good work.
So commissioners, what thoughts would you like to share? I know that we have discussed this multiple times, and...
We could go out of public hearing.
She did.
Oh, I guess I wasn't listening, huh?
I just took charge of that, so, anyway. So commissioners, do you want to share some thoughts?
I can appreciate what Mrs. Swan was talking about. I think that area, historically going back to when all those was developed, in hindsight, maybe it was overdeveloped, and that's why things got put on hold. My feelings with this particular piece of property is I think that piece of property become a victim of nonusable property.
I'm sorry.
And it just, it just won't be able to be used for anything. The piece on the corner, I think, you know, I think the city, we're going to have to figure out a way to get some results for the property owners around there. But I think, I think this overlay is right for this neighborhood. I think it's, it's the, the, uh, property, or the drawings of it. It's got garages where none of them units have garages. It's going to be, I think, an asset to that neighborhood versus just a bunch of dirt and weeds. So my feelings on this, commissioners, is that I'd be in favor of doing what is proposed here.
So Mrs. Swan, where's the problems coming from with the place over there?
It's the fourplex, I think, right here, isn't it?
But nobody lives there.
Nobody lives there in that one, and that one is the one that's falling apart. The one directly across there, that one has been cleaned up and it is a lot better. There are some better people in there. We haven't had the cops in there for quite a while. So that one has been cleaned up and it is a lot better than it has been. And then, the one that's in, in the same parking lot, so there's three that sit, there's two where the trash one is, and then there's another one that's been upkept. And that one is very good, they keep their lawn mowed, it's very clean. We have no problem with that one. But that one on the corner, and then just the thought of getting more apartments is...
So, so if that got cleaned up, that corner lot, would that sort of make you happy?
It would, it would make me tremendously happy to get that corner lot, we nailed it, yes.
Because I think Mr. Casey's, it's cleaned his pla, you know, he, when he bought it, he made it a lot better. He's got some good tenants in it, and he's got a good design in it. This infill overlay, the city council's done some different things in the last year to make some of these things work, where we can move it to an R3 instead of an R1.6. And clean up, see, that lot's not, is not a very good lot, and that, this would clean it up. The design's better, so you know you're going to have some people that want to come in and take care of it. He's a good landlord, so he's going to make sure that the tenants keep it nice and clean. So you're probably going to gain a couple of good, good tenants, good neighbors, instead of bad ones. If I sort of say that maybe we'll try to work with the city council and to try to fix that fourplex on the corner, would that make you happy?
That would make me really happy, yes. Yes, I could go for the...
So how's that?
I could go for the duplex if we can get rid of that corner.
Okay, okay.
I'd love that, thank you so much.
The history on this, by the way, is when they were building all those fourplexes, there was public clamor with the neighbors, and you probably one of them, because you lived there back in them days, if you can remember, that you didn't want, that you didn't want any more fourplexes.
Right, right.
No more fourplexes. And so the city council listened to you guys and, and, and quit it. You know, they put a moratorium on it at that time. Now things have changed, and, you know, we're going to the point where people need homes. And you can't have the bigger lots anymore, you can't have, I mean, people just can't afford a nice home anymore with a, especially, people are just coming out of college, and you have families and things like that, and they're not making very much money at the time, and something like this works out really well. And this is a great, have you seen the design, Mrs. Swan, of this, this fourplex? That is a beautiful design, and it's just like Brad said, it's got it, garages on it.
Have you got the picture of that?
Why don't you put it up there so Mrs. Swan can see this and see what, and I agree with you. The fourplex on the corner is absolute an eyesore. And, and I think it's a safety issue for the city, and I think it's bad for your, and it hurts your property values. I don't, I don't think this duplex is going to hurt your property values. In fact, I think it's going to raise it a little bit. And it will clean it up. Look, that's, that's a, isn't that pretty nice? That's nice, that's a nice unit. And he wants to build that, and so you know you're going to have two good families are going to move into that. And that will help your, help your community, help your ward. You know, I really do. I think your only problem that you have on this whole thing is just that fourplex. And if we can somehow try to fix that, I'm not, I'm not going to guarantee miracles on it, but, but I agree with you. You know, as a Spanish Fork citizen, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Anyway, but, but I think this will, I think this will upgrade your property values, and I think you're going to have two good neighbors. How's that?
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm...
Oh, you're okay. That's, that's what this, that's, but that's, you know, that's what this is all about. That's why we're here, and that's why you come and talk, so...
Commissioner Wilkinson, do you have any other thoughts?
I think I echo the feelings that have been expressed. I think we, it would be nice if we could have a magic wand and just take care of things really quickly, but they don't, don't work that way, do they? It takes, takes a lot of effort, and I think what Richard is saying is somebody owns that piece of property, and they have certain rights there, but the city also has some rights, and we ought to explore what those are in order to do the best we can to make that corner lot better than it is now. And so I think, as far as what's in our power and ability, that I would be in favor of doing what you're indicating there, Richard, is having the city explore that and see if we can bear some pressure, you know, on the owner of that lot to have something done differently than what you see right now. But I do like the idea of the townhouse, because I think that will attract some, some good people when he builds that. And I agree with the outcome of the neighborhood, I think it will be improved as a result of that.
So I think that Commissioner Davis did a good job of summarizing, I think, the commission's thoughts on it. For sure, we appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts about that corner. It is, strengthens our thoughts and what we were already thinking. But what the developer, Casey's proposing, is a good development that could benefit the community as well. So I think we're ready for our motion.
I'll make a motion that we change the zone change from a R1.6 to an R3, and that we approve the infill overlay to permit the construction of the duplex on the subject property.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and...
Are we, is this recommendation all?
Recommendation.
Recommendation to the city council for a zone change. All right, and we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Richard.
Aye.
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 Okay, we're ready to go to a second zone change proposal, which is the landmark zone change.
I wish they were all as easy as I think this one is. Got a little piece of property that was created when Landmark High School was constructed, and their driveway was built. And when that happened, you know, this previously had been part of just the bigger parcel that the school was constructed on, it became a remnant left over from that construction and was purchased by the group that owns the body shop next door. The zoning's never been changed to match what exists there with, with that body shop. They're looking at doing an expansion, which got us looking closely at the map. And the long and short of it's that changing the zoning to commercial two, so it matches what's next to it. It does allow them a little bit more flexibility in terms of where they can site a building because of the different setbacks that come with that commercial two zone. And just simply from a, kind of almost a zoning inventory kind of a perspective, in my view, this is, I might call it a cleanup. So staff's recommended that this, this proposal be approved, and I think that's the long and short of it.
Does anyone have any questions for Dave? Okay, then we need to open a public hearing. We need a motion on that? And a second?
Second.
Okay. Then we are ready for comments from anyone here who is, wants to say something about the landmark zone change. And nobody seems to be here for that purpose, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing for the landmark zone change. And commissioners, do you have any thoughts?
So that, that piece that's identified, that is the property owner. That's the property owner's property in the red.
Curry Robarge purchased that...
Oh, okay.
Recently. From the Nevo School District.
Okay.
And I've been owning that for a few years.
Landlocked there, so, yeah.
And they're just wanting to do an expansion, so they need it changed.
Looks like cleanup, like you described it.
Has he been breaking the law? Let's call Chief Adams right now.
Yeah. If we really, really wanted to split hairs, maybe, is the way I'd answer that.
Okay, well, I think we're ready for a motion if someone would like to make a motion. Again, we're making a recommendation to the city council.
I could do that. I would move that we recommend to the city council to change the zoning on the piece that has been viewed from rural, residential to commercial two.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we'll do a roll call on this as well, starting with Richard.
Aye.
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 All right, on to item three, which is a Title 15 amendment about residential setback.
Let's go to the next page here. Really simple proposal, right now in the R1.6 zone and a few other zones, we require side yard setbacks of five feet on one side and 10 feet on the other side. As I mentioned to you guys before we started the meeting tonight, we've had an applicant approach us who has a 50-foot wide lot. It's a really old lot, there was a home on it that he tore down in anticipation of constructing a new home on it. And the particular part of the community that this lot's located in, I think most of us would agree that new construction is going to be a great thing for that street and the neighborhood. And he has struggled to find a house plan that he feels comfortable using to, to build here at this location that's only 35 feet wide. He would like to be able to go a little bit wider than that. So the proposal simply is that on lots that are 50 feet wide or less, so with that, typically we're talking about some type of really old property that's been around for a long time. I think this typically would just be used for a kind of a tear down situation like what we're talking about now, because we simply haven't created new lots that are this wide, or that are only this wide for, for quite a while. We allow for the side yard setbacks to be five feet on each side, instead of five feet on one side with the requirement that there be 10 on the other. Honestly, I see no downside to this proposal at all. I see the upside, that it would simply make it easier and might encourage people to take advantage of that with new construction, or remodels, or different things, simply investing again in these zoning districts, which primarily are in the older part of the community, some of the original plats, which I think in, in most cases is going to be a very good thing.
I have a quick question. Is there a reason for a five-foot and 10-foot setback?
I think the idea was just to allow for simply more space between houses. It was that simple, really. It probably came up with that in a pretty arbitrary way, though.
So is this the wording, Dave, the way it's worded?
Yeah, so this is the change here.
Okay.
It's outlined in red there, might be kind of, kind of hard to read. So the change would simply be limited to situations where there's a lot with 50 feet of width or less. Not something that's going to apply on a real wide scale, which again, is partly why I feel comfortable recommending that this change be made.
Any other questions for Dave? Okay, so this is also a public hearing, so we'll need to have a motion to move into public hearing.
So moved.
And a second. Can I just second?
I'll second.
I can second. All right, so is anyone here to address the commission on this amendment change to Title 15? Okay, so no one is here, and so I'll close the public hearing, and we will take any comments from the commission? No one's very talkative today, so I'll just keep talking. So it looks like this is something that could benefit the community and has a good reason for being requested. So we need a motion to, let's see, we're recommending again? Dave making a recommendation again to city council? Okay, if anyone wants to make a motion.
Motion to recommend approval to the city council on the proposed setback change for the 50-foot wide residential lots.
All right, and do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And we will do a roll call, starting with Richard.
Aye.
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 All right, we're moving right along, so we are now to number four, the easement vacation. Am I saying that right?
Vacation?
You're all aware that the building that was here this time a year ago is gone, this is gone, and we're now working with the developer of the Canyon Creek project, as well as a restaurant that would like to build right about here. And Cory, the blue lines easements, is that right?
Correct, those, those, the blue and then these green would be what would remain. Hopefully, have these three separate flats that have been planted over the last 20 or so years, and we have easements everywhere. With, with the restaurant looking to go right in this area, the sewer has been relocated for disalignment up around that footprint of the potential building. And so part of the cleanup is, let's, let's go back and clean up these easements and keep them where we need them, but vacate them where we don't, so it kind of helps create that property and clean up things.
I think this is one of the things that the restaurants said we require, right?
This is a request from the restaurant. A lot of times, they don't verify that, and they just build on the easement, knowing it's not there. But legally, there's still easement, and this restaurant's going to be diligent and wanting it removed, which is...
Vacate not all those, right?
The, the red, the solid red lines vacating, the dash blue or the highlighted green, yellowish color is what would remain over the existing utilities. A little confusing on that because there's so many overlaps and...
This is going to be a good thing for the city?
For the developers.
Developing or...
It's pretty non-consequential for us, I would say.
It, it really doesn't affect much, we have easements over our utilities. What it, what it helps is it facilitates...
That's where it becomes important.
A restaurant that, that wants to come in, that I think would be great for the...
Are the, are the old?
Sales tax.
Sales tax and...
So the old red lines is where utilities used to exist, and now we've got...
Yeah, there's some water lines that have been abandoned in the area, removed or relocated over the history of, of, I don't know how many years that that development's been there, but...
So this is a cleanup, basically?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
All right. This is also a public hearing, and so we will need a motion to move into public hearing.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. So is anyone here who would like to address the commissioners about the easement vacation? And no one is here to do that, so we will close the public... And no one is here to do that, so we will close the public hearing. And, if any of the Commissioners have any additional comments or questions, or we can just take a motion?
Motion to approve the va- vacated easements on Canyon Creek Phase Nine, recommended to the City Council.
Second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, so we will just do a roll call vote, starting with Richard.
Aye.
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 Okay. Now, we have a few matters of other business, starting with the Kiri property.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of, uh, things to help us get oriented before, uh, I turn things over to the Planning Commission and the applicant to talk about the development proposal. The property that we're talking about's near the corner of Ninth South and Fifteenth West. Uh, you might remember the River Point subdivision, that was approved about a year and a half ago. It's located, uh, immediately east of the subject property. You can see the Spanish Fork River, uh, the Sugar Beet Factory, right here. Now, it's a pallet factory, but, uh, just another landmark. Um, the proposal that we'd like you to discuss tonight, simply from a land use perspective, and there's some engineering issues, maybe some floodplain issues, and different things like that, that I'm really confident that if you're comfortable with the land use, um, we can work through, you know, with the applicant and bring a, a plat here for your consideration, maybe in the next few months. But, uh, as I look at this, my first question just has to do with whether or not the Planning Commission feels comfortable with having, you know, what for us is a relatively high-density land use at this location where, Cory, can you go to the general plan map? Um, with the latest revision that we did on the general plan here just this past year, uh, first of all, we created a new designation for the general plan that's intended to, uh, prescribe lower density than what we had before. The estate density designation, and that's what, what this brown color here, uh, indicates. So, the property is just to the south of the subject property, and their side of south, excuse me, on the other side of Ninth South, which is here. The property that we're talking about's right here. We consciously decided to go, I guess, in, in another direction from what's being proposed now, and the subject property with the current general plan is planned for simply low-density residential uses, you know, probably something that would allow for development that's similar to what's happening. Again, in the, the subdivisions, right next door with twelve thousand square foot lot, so we'd love for you to give, uh, give us and the applicant any, any ideas or thoughts that you have about just that, that concept. So, for example, if, if you're comfortable with, uh, with the idea that they have, the next step for them, I think would be to propose a general plan amendment to change the general plan document, uh, to, uh, probably high-density residential at this property, which is the only designation that we have that would accommodate, uh, uh, the kind of development they're proposing. And, I think that's it for me. Let me mention as well, Commissioner Fallon, uh, had looked over the materials that we'd sent out, and he emailed me some comments that I got just about the time the meeting started. I then forwarded those to you guys, so I don't know if, if anybody wants to maybe pull those up and review them, share them with the applicant or something like that. That might be useful. Um, I'll let you decide how, how you wanna handle that, so.
So this is, um, kind of a discussion-type of situation?
No action, but we'd love for you to be as just open and candid and direct with us as you'd care to be.
Alright. So, Commissioners, I'm just gonna, do you wanna discuss it first? You wanna hear it from the applicant first? What, what would be your?
Listen.
Okay. Okay. So is the applicant here?
I'm Susan Palmer, and we are from Rich Point Management Group, and, um, we have been asked to help in the development of this project. And we are proposing that we put townhomes in this area, um, and then work with the floodplain to try and get it out of the floodplain. That's what we're proposing, is to work with Ploma and get it out of the floodplain. FEMA to get it out of the floodplain. You can, can you explain more of what's?
Yeah, so actually, when I first brought this project to Cory, he kinda looked at me like I was crazy, because he had to bring in so much dirt. The density, we, we plan on keeping it at the three units to the acre, just as the stuff to the east is. Um, yeah, it's townhomes. We plan on, I mean, on the east side where the other, where you can kinda see the road, um, right, yeah, right here, there's, it's actually, there's probably like a twenty-foot drop. It's a pretty big drop right there, so we figured that the, um, that if we put townhomes underneath that, I mean, it's not really gonna affect these homes up here or anything. Um, when me and Cory went through this, we had to bring up all the dirt about seven feet throughout the whole project?
Probably the most extreme cases, yeah.
Right, between five and seven feet. So this over here, we would leave in the floodplain. I don't think we'd bring any of this up, and we'd kinda turn it into a park. Yeah, I think that's, I mean, and we actually have the property on the other side of this road too, but we haven't kinda seen where we can go with this side first. I mean, because we have it all the way to the freeway, and so that's why we kinda figured we could kinda use townhomes to transition and go.
Bring that on the other side, almost. On our map.
Yeah, so it's this property right here that we also have, um, and so we figured we could just transition this, and it would come into townhomes, and we could do a little bit higher density on that side of the road too, but it would kinda transition versus just going from big, nice homes and.
Have to bring a lot of dirt in. I've seen all that underwater twice in my lifetime.
Right. And we'd do everything we could to get it through FEMA, make sure it's up out of the floodplain to where we didn't have to deal with water issues.
So are you thinking the same concept on the other side of, uh, Fifteen Hundred West?
Pretty similar, yes.
So where's the transition right now? Is it, is, uh, is it right here that you see the drop, or is it back further?
Uh, it's like right here, like right here along this road.
So is this all floodplain right now?
Yes.
So this is where you're talking you'd have to put the fill?
Yes.
About seven feet across the, and so, once that fill was in, how much elevation changes or between your new, uh, elevated property and then out here? There's still quite a transition there, isn't there? Because I think right now, that drops like fifteen feet or something.
Yeah, it's like fifteen to twenty feet.
Yeah.
Um.
So there still would be, okay.
Do you have the proposed roads that's going on there? So, yeah, so the, the roads that we have coming in is off Fifteen Fifty that come into here, so we wouldn't really be up on top here. So we'd keep it down a little bit lower.
But not as low as here.
Right, it would definitely, it has to come up above that. And then, we've worked with, uh, the River Point development also, and he's willing to work with us to bring this road so it's not, so it's straight, so he doesn't have to put this little hole in it.
How high is the road, river, ridge, lane gonna be, or road right there? Because that's all been underwater before. Where your road, where your proposed road's gonna be?
Well, that, they'd have to have fill for these two, so the fill would have to come clear back to here somewhere, wouldn't it?
Right, so we have to, we have to bring it up for this road right here, because this road has to come all the way through to Fifteen Fifty.
For the sewer, doesn't he have to?
Right, and the sewer's gonna come underneath that, that road right here, and we've talked to him, he, to Joel, and he's willing to drop his sewer down lower to make it work, so it would go all the way to Fifteen Fifty.
Then you'd have to put a pump on the other side if you went that direction?
So.
Pump station or?
How did the pumps exactly work?
We, we'd have to look at something of that nature. Uh, as a city, we don't like localized sewer lift stations that the city maintains. Um, we like to regionalize. Um, I can't say we've studied to a level to have the full answer. If it's, if it's something that has an HOA, that perhaps could be a private system, um, but I can't say we've discussed enough to have a full answer. That, that is an area that the sewer service is, uh, gonna need a solution like that to work.
So surrounding this whole area is single home dwellings. Is there no single home dwelling option that would work for your ideas?
We could possibly make it work. We've, the reason we chose the townhomes is because we didn't want to bring fill all over here, and we could leave some of it in the floodplain. We wouldn't have to bring it all completely up out of it, and there'd still be about, it's almost seven acres still in the floodplain. And so it'd still have an overfill if there was to be a bunch of water.
Well, here's the problem. I guess there's any more, can show up.
Hey, Richard.
Is your R one twelve right here, and all that's designated for over here. Over here, Mill Road, you, we had, we had a, when I was on the City Council, we had something, that we had an R one five, and a developer come in and wanted it to drop to an R one twelve, which was a lot lower density than what you're proposing. So for going from an R one five and then to an R one twelve, well, the City Council did not like that because of what was going on in the development and carrying on. We wanted to continue on with an R one five. That's what we designed it when we did our zone changings and everything else. We wanted to continue on with that. You've got the same, basically, scenario in a way, except you're really going to a higher density. You've got your R one twelves, and, and basically, it's surrounding yourself with the same type of density, and now you wanna go with a really high density with putting these smaller is, smaller, or higher density issues, and I'm just not so sure that the, the City Council that you've got now, or even, I, I like that concept of just jumping down from an R one twelve to something that quick and fast. I just, and, and the other thing that really worries me is the floodplain. Like I said, in eighty-three, in my lifetime, in eighty-three and then two thousand and eleven, that was underwater. That was, you would really have to bring it, a lot of stuff to, to make that work, and I, anyway, up on the hillside, you could, you know, it would work okay. Uh, what is your neighbors? Have you talked to the Yowts and, and, and Bradfords and things like that on, on that issues?
No, the main person I've talked to is the other developer, just on that, the River Point.
I know that, you know, you got the Yowts on the corner and the Bradfords, and then you go down and see the Baskards on that, and.
Down in here, Richard?
Yeah. Across the street, you've got Shepherds and, you know, and, and they, you know, these are all people that's got big lots and farmland ground and, and stuff like that, and to see a higher-density, uh, project come flying into there, I'm not so sure they would really agree with that either. Especially when, like I said, the city's already approved all this R one twelve coming down and bringing it this way, and then all of a sudden, just put a higher density like that, I'm not so sure that, that would work. I just, it's just not been, that's just not what the City Council and the, and Planning Commission has, had looked at when we made our, our general plan for this area.
Yeah, and that's, so when we did the road coming through the middle, that's kinda why we tried to separate it. We did, I think, six houses right here on the, we did six houses right here coming in, and then we did this park, and then we tried, so we could kinda transition into here. So it wasn't just.
If you follow suit, see, on the development just to the east of you.
Right.
And followed that, then, yeah, then you, then you're looking good. You know what I mean? You're following suit of what the city has required in their general plan for that area.
Yeah.
So you're saying, Richard, that the consistency is what we're probably looking for?
That's right.
It's zoned for kinda what?
When, when the City Council and the Planning Commission, back a few years ago, you know, when we sat back, back in two thousand and eleven, was it, Dave? I think so, two thousand and twelve. Yeah, two thousand and twelve, we sat down and we made areas for, you know, different areas, and this was, this was a lower-density area, you know, and it, for an R one twelve, and as you can see, we've followed suit and followed that consistency around there. And as you go around and then head back towards the south, it goes from an R twelve and bounces up to an R one five. And, and that's what we sort of had planned in, in our general plan. And I, you know, you're bringing in a concept that's out of what we, what we thought would be for that area.
Well.
And, and then your floodplain is your big issue, you know, I mean, that's the, that's the other reason, is, is floodplain, is how we've sort of designed that and thought, thought about it. We've had people come in, I don't know how big of experts they are, on talking to us about it, but anyway, you know, suggesting things like this and, and, and helping us with our city planning and, 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 and stuff like that. Anyway, that's just my concept of, of what I understand and what I've studied and looked at in our general plan and what the city has looked at.
Right. Well, and like I said, it's, the reason we thought of that is just because, I mean, we have this over here, I mean, this is a higher density as we get close to I fifteen here.
What is this zoned over here?
It's, it's just.
Rural residential today.
Right, the general plan has it as median density.
So what kinda lot size?
What does that mean?
Would it have a lot size?
Uh, if the zoning was changed, it could be anything from R one six, R one nine.
Same thing over here?
Correct.
But this is the, our newest zone with the estate lots, right?
Right.
I, I gotta agree with some of the concept with Richard for sure about the consistency here. And, and keeping that fill, then property owners are gonna probably appreciate that more than anything, just that consistency than having the high density. And then across the street, you've even got bigger lots. You've got the opportunity for people to build even bigger homes, and so that could be perceived as a, a threat to them, a, a devalue their property maybe a little bit.
So you'd rather see bigger lots and just try to work with the whole floodplain?
Well, the, the floodplain is gonna be your issue, or whoever develops that property.
Exactly.
Uh, i- if you guys can make it work and meet all the criteria, then, 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 yes, I would rather see this type of homes continue clear out, and if you can maximize that ground, you know, wahoo, uh, you know, take advantage of it. It would take probably a lot of fill, but, you know, that's kind of a different issue.
We planned on the fill, so, like I said, we were just trying to, I guess, minimize and maximize at the same time.
Right.
Or, sure, and you do as a, as a developer, you wanna get the biggest bang for your buck. Uh, this type of, you know, twin homes and multi-family homes, we like to see it near, uh, roadways that can get people out quick, you know, so closer to freeway onramps, closer to more main roads. And that's where you see most of our, uh, high-density currently in the city. Currently, you know, there's a lot of rural roads here that could be impacted with more cars on the road.
Right, well, I know there's a lot of development going on over here too, so.
And roads, you know, may open up and get wider, and, and it would be a non-issue, but I guess it's more of just the consistency of, you know, move into this little chunk here that, that looks different than the rest.
Right.
That's just an opinion, that's just a thought, uh, if you move forward with this, you know, some of the public comment will drive some of that. Maybe the neighbors will be fine with it.
Yeah.
And, and, and maybe some due diligence on that would be worth your effort.
Yeah, and I'll go knock on some of the doors, talk to some of the neighbors. Because I know, like I said, I know this part right here is kinda hidden with this hill right here, and that was the reason, you know, thought it was possible for that too.
Yeah, that it maybe wouldn't blend in so much. It would be kind of its own little area.
Right, exactly.
Commissioner Wilkinson, do you have any thoughts?
I've been feeling about the same way. It doesn't fit with previous thinking on what this area would be, how the, the build-out would go because of the general plan, and. And, uh, first look at it, you're going, whoa, that doesn't conform very well, you know, with, with what's in that area, that rural area. To just slap high density in there and have a lot of people move into that area where the, uh, roads probably, as indicated, may not be set up to handle the traffic to begin with. And, um, so there's a lot of people that have looked at it in the past and from their thoughts, no, it doesn't conform right now. But this is the first time we look at it and so that's what we're thinking. Whoa, it's, it's got a whoa factor and let's stop and see what's, what, what they're trying to propose here. And so that's where we're too, we're going, right now, it doesn't look like it's fitting with the previous thinking.
Right, and I, and again, with like, like you said, with the, uh, uh, density. We kept the density as the same as everything to the east. It's still only three hundred acres, just all kinda put back into that corner. So we don't really increase the density or anything like that, we tried to keep it.
I don't know if, if it'd be profitable enough to, to try to develop the whole thing and get more lots in there because to get that out of the floodplain would be a real expense. So I, we see the direction you were headed, obviously. Let's, let's try to maximize what we can s- get on sales here and let's put more in there. But it just wasn't fitting right now with, with the way that it's been previously looked at. So you need, you need to know that going into it, yeah.
You know what used to be right there? The Leyland Church.
Yeah.
A little church, a little LDS church was right there at one time.
That's right.
Well, hopefully we've given you some good thoughts and ideas to help you move forward with, uh, your plans.
Okay.
We appreciate you coming.
Well, thank you.
Be sure to ask more.
All right, we are on to our second, uh, discussion item, which is the Meadow Creek Townhomes.
You know, I don't see applicants for that one here yet, so do you mind skipping that?
We'll skip that one and go to the Christianson Apartments.
Great, uh, you've seen this one once before. I'd call this maybe development pro- proposal two point O. And, and before I do anything else, it's not very often that we get dignitaries that join us for a planning commission meeting. But when we do, we try to make sure we recognize them. We're very fortunate tonight to have, to have the Utah County Recorder with us. So Jeff Smith, let me make sure.
Yeah, thanks, you, you cut their office again, we'll have something for you.
Kinda trying to embarrass Jeff, we've been friends for a long time. But let me also say that, uh, Jeff, I mean this, you know.
Twelve people are gonna see this.
When we have issues, uh, Jeff's always very, very helpful. And helps make things easier, both for us and the people that we work with, developers. And, uh, we really appreciate that, we really do, so thanks.
You guys, you get to work with the city. I remember we worked with you guys.
That's good to hear as well. Um, but you guys wanna take some time, just kinda talk through the proposal and maybe what's changed since the last time the planning commission saw us?
Hi.
Um, I have, what's changed is that, um.
Do we need, do we need a name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Karen Christensen.
Is that okay?
Yes, I, I came in June of last year and kinda presented, it was little L shape on the Old Rees School property. And it took a long time to go through the foreclosure process. So I was testing the water and trying to move through it. And so I've now owned it for three whole months, so. In the meantime, I've asked Julie Smith to help me out. Talked with Dave last summer and he suggested putting garages in, that they liked that idea. When I was really able to do something in an ownership position, then it was, yes, we wanna do garages. So that changed our plan. So I've asked Gil Rand if he would, um, draw up something new for you to take a look at. And Julie, do you wanna kind of talk about specifics?
Julie Smith, um, so currently, um, on this property, you know, she'll be taking down the Old Rees School. Um, and we've been working fairly closely with Dave on what your guys' vision would be there.
Taking down my old school that I grew up in?
I know, it's so cool going through it.
My dad even went to that school.
You need to go through it one more time. It is, it's actually, I was really impressed how, how cool the school is, it's sad come down.
It had, it had great spook alleys in the Halloween.
Well, it's a spook alley right now.
Not in a good sense, huh?
I heard a story that my dad was helping construction as a young kid and.
Your dad is who?
My dad is Ken Penniger.
Ken and Ruth Penniger.
Yes.
Approved.
They are two of my favorite people, are worthy.
Well, Karen's trying to build something really nice here. Um, and so we, we're gonna have to go in and get the zone changed on this. Currently, I think we're allowed twelve units per acre, which would allow for twenty-four units. And we're, um, asking for forty units in there. And as you can see, it, it's still really wide open. Um, I think our height is only gonna be about thirty-eight, forty, forty feet on there. Um, with the garages, it, it kinda changed Karen's whole concept originally. She was gonna go two stories and then when we added the garages, it, it, we needed to go three stories on it. Um, the south of elevation would be the, the elevation on both streets that you would see. Um, and then the north elevation would be the elevation from the interior. So you would not see any of the garages, if you go back to the site plan now, um, from either corner. Um, we're looking at, so Dave's gonna write a new zone for us on this. Um, so we're working with him on what elements we would like in that. He wanted us to get as many garages as we could in these buildings. And obviously, it's just a math problem. And all we could get was twelve garages per twenty units. Um, and so I think our ratio was right around sixty, sixty-three percent. And Dave was shooting for eighty, but obviously, you can only get what you can get in there. Um, and then we were gonna have covered parking, um, for the, um, other, what'd it be, eight, sixteen units? So each, everybody has a covered parking, some will have garages, others won't. Um, the bottom unit will have a, the garage that walks into your unit. So if you're on the bottom unit, you have direct access right to your garage. Um, Gil's working on the other, so from your garage, we'll probably have a hallway that will go up to the stairs. So you won't have to go out and around if you have a garage to get up into your unit. Um, we're working on setbacks with Dave. We thought on Fourth North, that we wanted to keep that building back probably twenty feet. Um, just 'cause that's such a busy road. And, and, you know, we talked about noise and stuff and Dave actually thought we could come actually a little bit closer than that. Depending on what kind of materials we use on the buildings to keep some of that noise down. Second East won't be as busy, so we might push the, the building a little bit closer to the road. And then as you see in the corner, Karen wanted to really have a sense of community. And so we have that little open space there with a gazebo, um, yeah, right in there. So that'll be a little gazebo, open space area there. And then we also have quite a large, um, area in the back. I can't quite remember those dimensions, but it was fairly large when we sat and calculated the open space there.
Just grass?
Yeah, that'll all be grass and it'll have the little player in there. So the entire back area there will be, um, open space for the people within the, in the units there. Um, we try to make good circulation, we try to keep the driveways away from the intersection for safety issues. Um, we take, try to take into everything we could and count in designing this. And hopefully, this kinda meets your idea, um, when you went with Karen back in June. Um, if, hopefully, we're going in the right direction. If we get a thumbs up, we'll move forward with plans and design with the architect and Dave on his own. We'd like to get going on this as soon as possible. When Karen feels comfortable, then we will take the building down and start work on that. Any questions?
Thank you. Oh, yeah. So the covered, the covered parking, is that in the center or is it on perimeter or?
We haven't, we haven't designed that yet. We've talked about possibly separating it, you know, and having where you see the ten and the handicap. Possible eight parking there and eight over where you see the sixteen. Or we've talked about combining them there where you see the twenty-five and having sixteen covered there on both sides. So it leaves the rest really open. So we're kinda leaving that to Gil to see what feels the best for the covered parking.
Do you guys have anything else that you wanna add to that? You guys?
Do you have questions?
Okay, yeah, I'll just, maybe I'll just start with Bruce's concept, ideas, is that all right? Yeah, I did, I should've pulled it up for the last one, sorry. Um, but this one's a good one, since this is kinda his specialty as well, so. Uh, Bruce just ser- shares a few thoughts. He says, "Conceptually, the site plan has some good things going for it. I like that they addressed the street and placed the parking behind with the open space included." Um, I'm not sure what he means by a second comment. I do agree with the idea that the corner should be more. Is that something that?
I'm not sure how to take that into it.
Okay.
We could get in the color if I'm sure.
Okay, so one of the corners apparently, he thinks should have more. "I wish that the design of the buildings had more connection with the scale and repet- repetition of the adjacent neighborhood." Um, I think his last comment's kinda fallen into that same area. "I don't like the three-story building for this location. The design doesn't feel like it was designed for the specific location. And the connection with the pedestrian with this design needs more improvement." So it does sound like he's a little concerned with how well this specific design fits in with that neighborhood and being, and, you know, kinda that same idea, the consistency and at least appearance. And that, so he's kinda good at that kinda stuff, so his thoughts are probably good to hear.
I think the architectural, we're trying to keep it more of that look that the school currently has, you know, with the brick. And she has archways and stuff kinda like the school has, kinda still have that feeling of what the school had.
The school wasn't three stories high though.
No, but it had the archways and, you know, and, and again, from her first design, it was before we added the garages. And, and I guess that's kind of what people are wanting right now.
So there's a corner occupied, corner occupied places or?
That's, that's what we're going through that again. Um, it, we're almost leaning towards kinda minimizing it, so we'll have, each of those will be individual units. Um, that's, that's still out.
But they certainly, this certainly could be an apartment project.
Yeah, it could be an apartment, but, you know, it, it, she's still exploring everything, so. Um, even, it could be kinda minimized and Karen could hold on to one. She could sell one or two units to help, you know, get the bill down. It just leaves more options out there.
So Dave, how does this fit into, I know this doesn't really fit into any zone. But we created, you know, a, a list of requirements and ideas for the highest density apartment type buildings. Where does this fall into that criteria?
It really doesn't in a few different ways. So, uh, you know, admittedly, I'm kinda flying a little bit blind. But hopefully, I'm not way off base and kind of assuming that we might take the, the R four zone and use that as a model for a, a new zoning district that would work in more of just this part of the community where you would anticipate a project to be smaller. You know, in terms of area and the total number of units and some different things like that. Um, whereas the R four zone's really intended to be used where you've got a, a greenfield kinda development site, you know? Vacant land, never been developed, uh, bigger project. I think our minimum project size is twelve acres, I wanna say. Might be wrong about that, um.
What is this acreage?
This is two here. And frankly, this would be obviously one of the bigger sites around town. You know, for any other block in the older part of the community, you're probably assembling six, you know, maybe seven or eight parcels to get to two acres like they have here. Um, but again, the idea would be to take that R four zone as a model. Um, so the specific things, if we did that, that we'd need to think through, you know, maybe what is an appropriate minimum project size? Might think about a maximum as well. Um, what is an appropriate number for that thing we always focus on? You know, the density, uh, height. Um, with the R four zone, we looked a lot at just building bulk and mass. Um, uh, so I think those would be the, the key things that probably we, we need to think through just in terms of drafting a new zone. Given the amount of time and effort that you all put into the R four zone here not that long ago. I'm not really intimidated at all about the prospect of being able to put some new zoning language together that, that would work. Um, but, uh, you know, it's a process that we haven't started yet.
We look at that, uh, site plan again. So the, the building height really concerns me more, more than anything.
Is it, what is it, thirty-five feet or how?
Thirty-eight feet, that's the very peak.
The very peak, thirty-eight feet.
I like the garages, I like the architecture, the lines, that, that kinda stuff. But, you know, you've got a lot of open space here. I, I know a third building would add cost, but it would also allow you to, you know, maybe go two levels with garages. And then you could even get that many more garages in it if you had a third building here. You'd get that many more garages that would be covered. Uh, I look, I looked at some of the sites we went on that field trip when he was doing the R four. And one that really stood out was that Cortland Apartments in Orem. I think that's on Center Street?
Eighth North.
Eighth North? You guys familiar with Cortland Apartments?
Yeah, we want to take pictures of it.
Yeah.
Fantastic, I mean, all of the commissioners just love that, uh, the architecture, they all had garages and, you know, they had buildings going in and out and I don't know, L shaped and H shaped and, and I just wonder, you know, it's some, some, well, yeah, that was huge. Uh, it probably six, six acres plus, ten acres maybe?
Yeah, I would guess at least ten.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if it's even possible what I'm saying, but if, if, if there's another way to get three buildings and get two stories and accomplish that.
I think the, the big issue would be your open space. I think right now, you require thirty percent?
Again.
Well, again, this is wide open, but when Dave gave us our parameters, that was so, so that would have to be taken into consideration. So obviously, um, you would lose open space, you know, we could, would you rather have less building height and less open space?
Probably, just because of what's in the neighborhood right now.
Neighborhood would be a big factor.
Mm-hmm, would there be a, would it be wrong to have a variance in three and two-story? I mean, would that look?
We looked at some of that.
Bad to do a little bit of change in that?
In Geneva, that area, uh, by the Larry Miller movie houses, you know, uh, Geneva area, there was some two and three stories.
Vineyard area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think maybe one thing to consider, just relative to building height. And Cory, if you can go back to the building elevation, then I'll probably ask you to go back to this again pretty quickly, but, um, just trying to think through what I might be concerned about if I was a neighbor. And it's really just the proximity of, of this to me. So sometimes you'll see, you'll see a step, you know, to where it's a two-story building and there's another story that's stepped back from that facade. Um, just happened to be in Chicago last week and saw that used all over the place.
So it changes the?
So that when you're at the street level, it just doesn't feel quite as big. There's not as much, you can, you can at least have that feeling. And then in terms of, of light and.
So what you're saying, this, this is a pretty flat surface all the way across here?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, and you're thinking?
I had an overhead, I could sketch out what.
Transition that a little bit by stepping in and out.
Yeah, so maybe something.
Uh-oh.
To where you might have something kind of like that, in fact, adjacent to the, to the, let's say, street.
So that visually, it doesn't seem so big?
Right.
And that would fit in better with that neighborhood?
Yeah, and if you, if you go back.
A little less imposing.
Yeah, when you go back to the site plan, when we sat with Dave too, is one thing that we look at as we're designing a project, the surrounding neighbors on the north and west. Those homes around there, we are extremely far from the edge. Instead of having, you know, a building ten, fifteen off. Those homes around there, we are extremely far from the edge, instead of having, you know, a building ten, fifteen off property line and all of a sudden you've lost your sunshine. You look at, you see this big building, that was part of the design here, is if we're going this tall a unit, where, where would it best fit? You know, that was part of the design, and, and I think, I don't think the neighbors would be upset on the north and the west of us, you know, how the neighbors surrounding it on the other two sides. You know, looking at it, I'm not, I'm not sure, it's set back and it's got to be a heck of a lot better than empty building right now.
Sure.
Do you know how tall this, uh, Mr. Davis, do you know how tall the existing school is right now?
Probably fifty, twenty-eight maybe.
Yeah, that's probably a good guess, maybe, maybe twenty.
Twenty? So it would be about sixteen feet taller?
Shows the other houses. Is that the right term, Google, Google map?
Yep.
Or do you use your...
What a tool this is, right?
This is from Fourth North.
Yeah.
I'd say about twenty feet, don't you think?
Some parts.
The chimney.
There you go.
See what you've got on Fourth North, and if you go over on Second East, and see what you have down this.
There's a two-story.
Yeah, I mean, that one's...
Couple of two-story right here.
That's an apartment, that's an apartment.
Yeah.
All the rest of them are just one-story homes all the way around that. If you got, if you want to look at anything that's got tall, go down on First East and go down to...
Oh, right there, yeah.
There is one right there on both corners, then there's two-story.
Well, and that's why I kind of thought maybe a little change in it would make it fit in a little bit better.
You're talking almost twice as high as that is now.
So I, I mentioned this to Dave when we met with him last time, was, I, I personally like the two-story. But, um, the idea of garages really did change everything.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's on a scale, a weighted thing of garages, which, which matters most? Garage, height, um...
Both.
Yeah, that's a point.
You brought in one, uh, drawing with, uh, colored parking, and I think, wasn't that two-story? The first time you presented it?
Yeah, it was just an, it was just an L-shaped and it was thirty-six units.
About the same thing, concept, though, I've never seen that one.
Field corner, because...
I, I don't know who else brought that other one with the homes in it, I haven't seen this.
That was Ken Harris drawing, wasn't it?
Yeah, Ken Harris drew that.
But it didn't have garages?
No.
Didn't have garages?
The garage...
No, they were...
The garages are nice.
Even if we, we talked about, even if we tried to map that out, thirty-six units. The way it was just, just for a quick, I was just testing the water then.
Yes.
And seeing if ownership was worth it. And, and that was kind of hotel-ish style, where you would enter and be internal hallway. You know, to, to really make it feel a little bit more accessible, it would have to be a different design anyway. Maybe separate that into two buildings. But I, I think it's worth exploring two stories or, and, and even like you said, the...
I think, I think your success with the neighbors would be a lot better, I think your public climate would be a lot less.
But, but would you be willing to create the zone with no garages, is what she's saying? Are you willing to give up height for no garages? Or is, I guess you're, you're writing the zone?
Well, I think what they were saying, maybe another building to allow you to have the garages, and, yeah. Instead of, the sacrifice would be for the open space, I think, rather than the garage.
It's just a math problem, what do, what do you want, there's only so much space there.
Hopefully, we can come to an agreement where, yeah, it works out financially, and it sounded like the three-story was a deal breaker with Bruce, I don't know, am I, is that what you were thinking he was saying?
Well, I don't know that he made it, I, I think he just was concerned about that height, I don't know that he...
But not necessarily a deal breaker.
I don't think, I mean, I think we're here to, to share ideas and consider, see what you... I mean, yeah.
How, how many units was in your first concept?
Thirty-six. So that's the R4 zone idea, so...
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six, so...
Thirty-six, and this got forty?
This got forty, so twenty per acre or eighteen per acre?
Medially wise, is this, is this the right number of uni, I mean...
And honestly, you know, I really appreciate the effort that the applicants put into this, which has been great to work with, but, um, you know, if, if twenty units to the acre is too much, you know, this might kind of help us see that. Relative to the height and some different things like that as well, so, um, I think that's something that in all fairness, we need to seriously think through. Um, if you simply took the third story off of these buildings as they're configured right now, you'd be looking at, it'd be down to twenty-four, so you'd be at twelve units to the acre. Personally, I think this site, for a lot of different reasons, should be used a little bit more intensely than that. But, uh, you know, that's just maybe to put it into perspective, what, what that, that change in height would do without talking about another building or other changes and that type of a thing, so.
You say that maybe because it's the close proximity to its town and getting around, I mean, maximize the amount of people.
Center Street kind of being, you know, literally, sorry, Fourth North and Main Street, ground zero. This is an appropriate place for density, in my opinion, you know, frankly, unlike the last proposal that we talked about.
Just to bring up, what about the old Central School when, when the, when Leifson and Barney built apartments in that? How many units was in that, can you remember?
That's three stories, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's three stories.
Yeah, I, I don't know how many units are in that building.
It's not far.
And that's, I'd love to say this, but relative to the height, again, maybe to compliment what the applicant's doing, I encourage them to not sweat going forty-eight, that kind of a thing. We've approved townhome projects that are there, multi-family projects that are at that height, so. Um, I don't know that I'm quite as, as concerned, maybe, but I think the insight that you guys are sharing relative to how the neighbors will perceive it is spot on.
I think it's your neighbors that are going to be there. So I'm just trying to think what Ken Penninger would do. What do you think, as a, he was the city councilman and he was a, he was a county commissioner.
He could very likely say it's a little high. I, I, I feel like it's a little high.
Just trying, I'm just, you know...
Um, I, I liked, when we first sat down with Gil, it was this idea of, let's, it's thirty-six and, but now we got to put garages in there. So the reason we rounded it to forty was because to do thirty-six, then you stepped it down, and it really was, well, let's just economically create two buildings that are solid. Otherwise, it would have, to, if, if we're shooting for a number, then it would have changed the elevations, and that, and, you know, if that's, if that's what...
I, I just think you're going to have some problems with three stories, I just really do.
On both streets, or do you think just the one two-hundred?
Mostly the two-hundred east.
And you feel like a three-story is okay on four-hundred where it's set back further and it's a busier road? And versus two-hundred, or does it not matter?
See, those houses on First East, there's a two-story that was built, you know, back in the eighties.
How would it be if...
Three, three or four of them built there.
That, that, the idea of not one big flat surface that goes up, it's not, you're not seeing it thirty-eight feet, you're seeing that at the peak. But I'm not sure what you are at the eve.
It'd be interesting to...
You're only about thirty feet at the eve.
So we have some variance.
So, yeah, um, it's just a big flat surface for that tall, I'm just wondering about if architecturally...
Oh, there's a lot, give them the one.
Well, it's not flat, I mean, there's...
So, so if we're looking, okay, oh, there is a little bit then.
Yeah, there's a lot.
So that breaks that up some then, yeah. And I, I'm easily persuaded probably either way, honestly, I mean, I, I could say it looks like a nice project and people were voting for that, I'd probably vote for it. And might vote for it anyway, so I, I don't know, you know?
We're here to get your feedback, you know, you're not here to hear from me, but the idea of having the buildings be different heights? If there are going to be two buildings on the site, I think that's worth...
Looking at.
For me, Fourth North is a very different, you know, this facility than, uh, Second East is.
I think so too.
And treating it that way, I think, makes good sense.
Yeah, so that would take it down to thirty-two units, you'd lose eight. There's four on the first floor because of the garages, and then eight and eight.
And there might be some other ways to skin the cat, you know, from a design perspective.
Well, and then even on two-hundred having some variance.
But, but I, I agree with Mr. Wilson, it's, it's not a flat surface, it's like any other house.
Yeah, it's got some dimension to it.
Yeah, it, it's architecturally pleasing, I think, I think Gil's done a great job.
Yeah.
You know, he's got hip roofs and...
I, his most recent, it changed from yesterday, that I...
The one that we passed on?
Oh, really?
That glass that goes all the way up, it's a cerule.
Very nice.
Yeah, you can, you can see it a little more there, um, looking down Second, Second East.
You know, and, and the other thing is too, we could keep the setbacks at twenty, or, I think we even have, I'm not sure Gil, I, I hope I'm not stepping on your toes, twenty-five feet. If moving it back from the roads gives it, you know, it's just not, all of a sudden, you hit this tall building, if that would help also.
Right now, we're at twenty feet from the property line, but we're thinking that the sidewalk is four or five feet outside of that, plus there is a four-foot...
There, you can see a little bit more.
So if we start...
Oh, yeah, you can, so they've got those sections that kick out, that's...
Yeah, so you'd actually be thirty feet from curb and gutter.
Does anyone else, any other thoughts to share? I feel like, to sum up, I, we do like the garage and the ideas, I think the biggest concern is just making sure it fits with the surrounding area and would be pleasing to the neighborhood. But obviously, a change in the area is good, we don't want to continue to have this school there, so. Everything's a good step, but that might be the thing just to consider, is to make sure, I think that's what Bruce was even saying, it just needs to fit to be the best plan, so.
Just maybe, by way of next steps, um, I'll tell you, I really appreciate everything that you guys have shared tonight on this project. Um, I'd love to keep them in the loop as best as we can, so maybe if we have another iteration, I'd love to bounce it off you guys if we get it, you know, well ahead of your next meeting, maybe just brought it out to them via email or something like that. Give them a chance to weigh in, maybe even talk about it again, you know, in the same kind of setting in your next meeting. I think, once we come up with, with a design that you like, putting together a zone that's going to permit that, and, you know, maybe help kind of protect us from some other things we might not want. That happens really quickly, so as much work as, as you put into this, I think saves everybody a lot of trouble down the road and just makes it easier. So, anyway, that's...
Alright, thank you, thank you for coming in. Alright, so we are ready now for the Meadow Creek Townhomes?
I think so, it's good to see you. The commission saw a proposal for this last fall. And we've got two different, uh, designs that the applicant would like some feedback on before they have the development engineered, so they're looking at, uh, you know, what might be tens of thousands of dollars worth of expense to take the next step with this proposal here. And in short, uh, just kind of looking for, um, any particular concerns that you guys might have, anything that might uh, give you reservations about recommending that a zone change and new master plan development be approved for this property. Just as a reminder, this property right now is part of the Meadow Creek Ridge Project where the single-family homes are under construction on the west side of State Road fifty-one. Uh, this is right now platted, uh, just in a preliminary form, for six thousand square foot lots, much like what's, uh, on the other side of the state road. Um, and in short, the idea of, of having that project's approval amended to allow for townhomes here was pretty well received. And when we talked with the planning commission about it before, it's something that staff, for several different reasons, thinks is a good idea. Um, but in terms of, you know, design and density, those are things that, um, we think it's best for you to weigh in on now. So that when we come back with the preliminary plat, it's easy to give it a thumbs, thumbs up, we would hope.
Alright, so, before, I guess we have any comments? I'm supposing you're the applicant, so, if you want to come up and tell us about your plans and ideas?
Thank you. I don't recognize some of you, but, uh, I remember Mr. Davis, we talked about this, but, so we've kind of changed it actually for quite a bit. And, uh, so this is the one layout, we just thought we'd show you two and, you know, trying to move forward. Um, these won't have basements, that's one of the biggest reasons this is happening. So we don't do basements, because we're having some water issues across the street, so. And, uh, it just seems to fit really well because Salisbury has their townhomes to the south and next to the tracks or by the busy highway, this is kind of where usually, usually you'd see a little more dense project, you know, so. But it really, what triggered it was the basement thing, but, um, so this layout has three parks, our old layout had one park. And, uh, so the main road, this Road A, would be a, a public road. Dave, are the forty-two foot roads, are they public? I don't know for sure if I remember. Okay. So they would be public, but the Road A is a sixty-foot road, the other roads are a forty-two foot. And, um, except for, may, maybe like, I've got a couple spots, like Road G against the railroad tracks, I think that's thirty, I can't read it, thirty-seven or... So we put the sidewalk and flipped it on the backside of the townhomes to make it more walkable, instead of having it on the front, we flipped it around the back. And I haven't, I'm going to meet with Chris Thompson in the morning, see how he feels about that, but, um, we're just trying to get more feedback so we can get this narrowed down, and we've been on this project four years and want to get it finished before I retire, so.
That's the power line?
Yeah, that's the big power line easement. And then Spanish Fork Parkway, you know, we'd have to extend that, because it dead ends at our single-family lots right now. They'd have to come up to the railroad tracks and that's going to be an at-grade crossing as it goes across to Mapleton. And we've already looked at that with your staff and, you know, there's no way to do a bridge over the top. It has to be an at-grade crossing, so there's a lot of things that's gone on for the last four years and...
Assuming there's a fence here along here, isn't there?
Well, you guys own the triangle, the white triangle, over, down, yeah. There's, so there's a fence where the black line is.
So this is Salisbury's homes here?
Yeah. I'm not sure what you're going to do with that weird triangle, but that's, you guys own it, it's, I'm sure it's free and clear.
I'll sell my share.
Uh, and that got off because the road down below, when we put this road in, coming across the garbage dump and the whole thing kind of got kicked over two times because of some wetland issues down below, and now it got off, and so we got this leftover triangle, but... Anyway, that's what happened. That's, uh, they're retaining that, the cellar, they're keeping that, and that's the grandma's house, it's a nice brick home. I'm not sure what they'll do over the years, you know, it's nothing right now, till she passes away in ten or fifteen more years, I don't know, you know?
Could it tie in to what you've got?
Yeah, I think they could tie it in, because, see that road on the end, they could just drive right over to it. The elevations? I've got, uh, Mr. Salisbury here, and, uh...
They look a lot, if you can remember, I mean, we can try to dig them up.
What we had before?
Uh, the project that's east of Somerset. Um, and Kim helped me name it.
Canyon Breeze?
Canyon Breeze, so he approved that last year. Those are the same elevations, I think, that we were given for this, but they might be changing.
I'm actively trying to remember.
It, um, don't mean anything derogatory, just pretty typical for what's been built in Spanish Fork.
Dave, can you come over here and draw again for us?
Guaranteed, these guys don't make you that.
So how do they look aesthetically, uh, compared to the Salisbury south of them?
I better, Mike, I'll let Mike come up.
This is from Canyon Breeze, but...
Because I don't know his private, he's the builder, we're the kind of the developer, and my brother's bought a lot on the other side, the single family, so.
Cause I don't know his projects, the builder, we're the kind of the developer, and my brother's bought the lots on the other side, the single family, so.
Okay, and it, I'm Mike with Salisbury Homes and, yes, the Whispering Willows product to the south, the footprints are very similar and the exterior elevations are similar, just those are a little more dated. Whereas now, roof lines are same, similar pitches, but we have more LP siding, more stucco accents, a little more stone, it's just what the market is allowing at this point. The Parkview product is probably, is a different footprint and different physical unit, but the trims on the Parkview frontload units are more similar to what we'd be putting into this project, as the market allows it now. And I think Dave is right, we do have elevations from the Canyon Breeze project and they are the same footprints, would be a similar product. They're a derivative of this Whispering Willows product, just with some more expenses, uh, on the exterior package, the elevation look. And then, we just wanted to know, we've, we have some input and the Riddler Spockers have been great about dealing with trying to come up with a layout that we really like. And we've got a lot of positive feedback in regards to how we've manipulated the open space and differentiated between the two products. We were concerned that if the other layout all has the same footprint and we thought that it wouldn't help, uh, this would help break it up quite a lot. And then by being able to have the joint access between the rear and the front loads, really naturally, all these parks came together, we just feel it'll be a lot more open and inviting of a project with still a, a reasonable amount of density on it. So, we're, we're really pleased with what they've come up with.
Are these kind of a, a dead end, Mike?
Yes, they would be, and those are private, essentially private lanes, and one, one question that we do have, this is working, we think, fairly well in Santaquin, where we have some narrower roadways. We are doing parking in the summer months only, in these dead-end roads, and during the winter months, no one is allowed to park in them, it's posted. So that snowplows can shove all of the snow just into those spots, and looking at this just briefly, we maybe will mark those, and all those dead-end roads as. You know, you can't park in them from November to March, and then we'll add some additional spots somewhere else to kind of help break that up, 'cause we are, uh, we, we do work pretty closely with the HOA that manages all these properties and we're trying to solve some of the small issues like that that we're seeing. In regards to, snow removal's kind of a big one, we're hav- we're fighting that down in Santaquin. Oh, yeah, excuse me, so like, here, we need to add, maybe we can add a parking here that we would lock out during certain parts of the year, same with here, 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 here. So your snowplow driver can drive in here and push everything into here, drive in here, push everything to here, drive in here, push everything to here, and then we could add some spots back into here, maybe here, we don't know if we wanna break this up, but just to kinda offset that.
So these are all HOAs, right?
This would be HOA, and we did hear some feedback in, in regards to the public versus private streets, and we're on board with, with whatever we need to do to facilitate what's best for everybody involved. We did reach out to our HOA management company and they said that the cost differentiation, the, the actual end user will see in their HOA is fairly minimal to maintain the roads, but we do. Have some respect for that comment, we, you know, we're starting to get more of these projects, we're starting to see where, okay, ten, fifteen years down the road, what are they trying to pay for, or pay for, and out of their expenses, so. Whispering Willows next door is very well-funded, they, you know, talking to them about how we're ten years in roughly on some of it, you know, their, what their reserves are, we actually talked to them about joining the properties together and, you know, residents brought up, we have this amount of reserves for this many roofs and. They've got some maintenance things that I can clearly see need to be taken care of, but they feel fairly confident in what they've done in there, that it would work next door, whichever direction we went. But we're willing to step up and increase the road width and make them public, especially as nice as this flows, a- as long as we can, uh, get the density to help offset it, which I think is, is a good balance.
Anything in the parks that you have, you know, that bring attractions to it, or just plain grass?
Yeah, we'll do, so, we'll do a, a tot lot here, we have a, a tot lot here, and then this is, we, these are the power lines, this isn't a very desirable area, of course, we thought about making this a pet park. And we, we wouldn't put any playground equipment in here, I will caution that the equipment that we expect to put in here isn't going to be like what's in Parkview Phase One. But what the market is affording right now is maybe a little nicer than what I've got in Maple Mountain Town Homes, maybe some medium ground there, i- it's not going to be. Uh, you know, seventy thousand dollar plastic high-end stuff, but it won't be the metal stuff I have up in Maple Mountain, I, I think we can do just a little bit nicer. Our open space here is a pretty good balance, I mean, it, it works, but there's a lot, this is, there's a lot of grounds there, I think it.
Almost forty percent.
Yeah, it's over four acres, and that's pretty significant for a, a hundred and eleven units. So that's a little more than what I know, any other questions for me? I'll quit wasting your time.
Only, when I look at that though, I just wonder about parking for visitors and stuff like that.
And I'll answer that, I've, I've lived in Whispering Willows and, and others have as well, so we, we get that feedback, I drove through there this morning and was looking at parking. To, to our defense here, I think your new standard is we have to have the depth on the parking in the driveways for the units. I'm in Maple Mountain at six forty-five every single morning, morning of every day of my life, and the residents that are there, there's enough parking in that facility. That the guys that can park in their driveways are and the overflow is not full, down on the south end of Maple Mountain, I've got my skid steer in a spot, a trailer in a spot, there's a dump truck from Idaho, they're parking their skid steer with their Ford longitudinally through twelve spots. It's not full, this has a ton more parking than anything I have under production right now, I, my opinion is it will not be an issue, this has more parking than Parkview does.
Well, this is the other layout, have you noticed, she changed the screen?
Yeah, yeah, maybe to point out, so that.
Hey, Kim.
The, these, correct me if I'm wrong, are, are kind of a rear load unit with the front doors facing the courtyard.
Yes, sir, so.
Similar here, whereas another option is adjusting, so it's more of a front load unit, less of the courtyard feel.
So if you wanna leave it on this one, Corey, just briefly, our concern here was, we have good driveway access all the way through this, but it does feel rather utilitarian and these open space areas are limited. They are there, but that's, that's less, that's twenty feet, and I think that's forty feet, you know, it, no one's going to play soccer in any of these areas. If we go to this one, Corey, if you don't mind, this is also, and I apologize, that last layout is only rear load townhomes and. Which, which locks us into a single product type, and we do have buyers that like both units for different reasons, I prefer our front loads, but we sell way more, I mean, we sell more rears. So, uh, these units, these are front load units, their front doors over here for this common space and this is a, a, excuse me, this is a front load unit. These are all rear load units, so their front doors open up to this nice community area, these are all front doors, this opens up to a nice community area. So their, their traffic is encouraged to come in the back end away from where, you know, pedestrian traffic is, et cetera, and that gives us this eighty-plus foot wide courtyard here that everybody can enjoy. And when we're looking at master plan communities down in some of our larger projects in Saint George, this, another one in Payson, one in Santaquin, we're kind of finding. Rick came up with this up there in Maple Mountain and it's worked really well, that park that's in the center there is used heavily, there were twenty kids in it this morning, so we just think this kinda space works really well. But the caveat of that is I have two units, two different types of units, rears and fronts, and we do have some access onto this road.
Any other thoughts or anything?
I'm not hearing concerns.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering though, well, if this were to move forward, is that gonna require a zone change or is it already zoned for this?
It would require a zone change to R three.
Okay, I don't know if I was miss, I wasn't paying attention to that.
I, I don't think I mentioned that.
That's fine, um, I just know that when we like, consider the townhomes at the, by the sports park and. The townhomes that are going in up on Highway Six behind the, uh, where that development's already at, next to that church there. I mean, there was a lot of discussion about the appearance and how it was gonna look and aesthetically, how it was gonna fit into the community. From this experience, it just, just from listening to you talk, I just feel like it's cookie cutter, I, I'm not really feeling like this is any special or unique. It's just, hey, we've done it before, we're gonna do it again, should we, I'm just throwing this out there, shouldn't we have the same concern for this townhome area as we would any other, the, the, the sports park townhome area, shouldn't we expect. More unique and individual care for each area, am I missing that, or?
Well, maybe, just by way of, this simply being a quick glance.
Okay, so maybe that's why I'm missing.
I think once we get a preliminary plat in front of you, we've got a landscape plan, we've got the architectural renderings at that point and different things. Um, we, we've gone through that on all the other projects that you talked about, and that's maybe where, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, you might feel like something's missing here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, thanks.
Missing a few big chunks, so right now it's more just.
If you're okay with the density on this?
Yeah, the concept and.
Okay, I, are you gonna ask that, Dave, I don't know.
You're okay with the density as far as what they're about, though?
I don't know, I'm not a big fan of townhomes, so I'm a really bad person to ask that question of, I am, feel that the city has a lot of townhomes. But, they're being filled, so, when do we hit that limit? I don't know, obviously, we're not there yet.
I'm not here to be the project's champion, but when it comes to a property in Spanish Fork, I can't think of, it, I was trying to do it, maybe you guys can think of one that is a better fit for townhomes than this one. Um, and I appreciate what you're saying, Tracy, but, uh, the situation, and I, I wouldn't even say townhomes necessarily, but just a little bit higher density, you know, whatever. Whatever form that ends up taking, state road, railroad tracks, you have it right next to, you have different things like that, um, again, not to try to, to sell you guys on the concept. And one thing that I heard about this layout as opposed to the other one, is that this would have some variety, in terms of the architecture, you'd have at least two different, you know, products that. They'd be marketing between the, the rear load and the front load types of units, and I suspect that if you wanted to see a little different style here. Um, the applicants probably would jump at, at doing some things to, to give it a different look and feel from other projects here in town. Um, I think, like Richard said, I think really right now, it's a matter of, you know, how do you feel about the, the number of units, just that overall density. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the project that you looked at or the design, uh, last fall was a hundred and eighteen units, I think we went back and checked here the past week or two and. And they've dropped a little bit down to one, one eleven, so.
How does this compare to the one just south of it then, for density?
It's almost identical, we went back and looked at that as well, and probably, uh, the previous proposal that we saw for this was, was a little bit higher. Than Whispering Willow, but where they've dropped it back down, but it's, it's almost identical. I'm gonna give you that number if you'd like.
I do like the open space though.
I do too.
I feel like open space compensates for density, so.
That's what's kinda.
I like that, uh, concept, I think, a little better.
I like this one better than the other.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think so.
Absolutely.
So, hopefully we gave you some feedback that's helpful, I, I mean, I don't think anyone's supposed to the townhomes being there.
I'm okay with it, I, in fact, when you say, you know, the cookie cutter approach, part of that is a lot of experience and what, what's been working. And what, and I liked your comments that you're, you're looking at projects that you've done and you're saying we're, we're meeting the demands of the market a little bit more and we're enhancing what. This, uh, fascia or the exterior will be, you were saying more stone, we've got a little more mix-up in some of the components that we're using, I, I think all that's good. And, um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the project.
Any other thoughts? All right, well, there you go, thanks.
I think we're good to move forward then?
Yeah, I think you're in good shape.
More detail though.
Sorry, sorry, more detail will be needed.
She wants to see the elevations.
It's the concept, what's going on in that area, and that's about what we wanted in the first place, was in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Since you're kinda basing this on retirement, can you give us that date?
I'm on a mission.
It's.
No commitment.
Moving target right now.
Yeah, let's, let's get it done then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure appreciate your time. Thank you, uh, and I hope you're comfortable, I'd like to do more and more of that with projects that we're getting on the front end than we've done in the past, that. Uh, the apartments that we talked about with the re-site, I mean, like I mentioned, I had suggested some things to the applicant that, I think very rightfully so, you guys have some different ideas about, and it was great to get that out, so they're hearing from. From decision-makers instead of just me, so I appreciate that a lot. I don't have anything else for tonight.
Anybody else have anything else that we need to comment on, so we need to make a motion to close our meeting, right, or do we not? Am I wrong with that?
I'm all, you want.
You can walk out, it wouldn't matter, I guess.
Meeting's adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned.